To the City of Nelson Council meeting March February 2024. I have it all here. Starting off with a couple of little prayers if you don't mind. Oh God, we thank you for today, Lord. We just asked that you would walk with us tonight, Lord, that you would leave God and direct us in all the decisions that we make for our community. Want you over those in service, Lord, our police officers, our firemen, our military, Lord, and those of servicemen that protect us here and offshore. We ask in your name to say.
Where do we begin? The United States of America and the Republic of which stands one nation under God in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I might move it.
Can I get a second? Yes, thank you. Public hearing. Go ahead and open up our public hearing first, Lord, the rezone of LI to NC to Blue Ridge. LI and NC to HI, Blue Ridge, and that's light industrial and neighborhood commercial to heavy industrial for Blue Ridge Marble.
Is the applicant here that wants to speak?
Yeah. Do you want to, Nelson, I mean Evan, you want to tell them what you have planned for today? Evan Howe, Randy, where do you want to?
The only reason that I'm in love that we're trying to get the thing rezoned is just to get it zoned correctly. It's never been, I think half of it's zoned neighborhood commercial or something, and one half of it's something else. And my understanding, we've come to find out that the side on the east of the railroad tracks is long different than the west side of railroad tracks. But it's all the marble company, and we're not changing anything we're doing. We're just trying to get it back to where people that move in that don't like us being there, they try to dig into finding a reason to cause us trouble, and this is a reason. This is something somebody later down the road can give us trouble over. So we're just trying to get it cleared up into one thing. It was rezoned sometime back, not, none of our, we weren't notified of it. It's nothing that we know of when it was rezoned to this anyway. So, you know, we had no recollection or no notification made of us whenever the zoning that it is now was done. We wasn't involved in it. So, I don't know. It's always been marble company since 1884, and it's never shut down. The power's never been off of it. It's, in 2003, it had a little idle time or some changes was being made in the company, but they, I mean, it's always been marble company. Have no plans of changing anything, what we do. But, you know, all the stuff that we do do by this zoning is not correct, and I reckon we're not in compliance with the way that it is. So we're trying to get it in compliance, or we won't have trouble down the road and continue on what we're doing.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
No, nobody has a question.
Are they all, so he just gives us some big segment?
Doesn't anybody else want to speak in support of the rezoning?
I will say that I actually asked them to take care of this, because if they ever go to rebuild a building that burned at some point, I would have an issue giving them a permit or something that was not correct.
Is there anybody that wanted to speak in opposition to this rezoning?
Are you speaking in opposition?
I'm having, I have a question for Mr. Howell.
Um, is that?
That's not really procedure. I mean, usually the audience can ask questions of counsel or make comments with the council. I mean, if you want to follow up with clarification, you can.
Okay.
That's okay, I will drop that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Counsel, you have anything?
Question for Jeff. Since this existing building, existing site, it would be legally nonconforming since you won't meet everything, but not necessarily required to make any changes.
They're legally nonconforming now. This would bring them totally legally conforming.
Well, with it being existing site, they could be totally conforming. There's a lot of requirements of HI for buffering, barns, all that kind of stuff.
Well.
Would it be an existing site?
So theoretically, even with an existing site to do the rezoning, you would need to look at compliance with regulations of HI, but that would usually be justification for a variance. And a variance could be, I mean, a variance could be given, I want you to examine like which things they need a variance for. That could be done as part of this process or to be done in a separate process if it's necessary.
I already have apparently absolutely a copy from the county, pretty much, with a lot of buffering, the peak screening, that a lot of stuff to be installed.
Probably.
I have anything to?
Oh yeah?
Well, if they would have zoned it, if they would have zoned it, when all this happened, wouldn't they come up with this zoning when there wasn't no zoning, best of my understanding?
It predated all zoning.
So when they zoned it the first time, if they would have done it right, what it should have been, we wouldn't be here anyway, I wouldn't think, would we?
Now, like I said, there'd be justification for variances from that stuff, and if that's something you all want to look at at some point, you can. You're probably not prepared to vote on all the specifics of that tonight, but obviously you would see that in this type of situation. So, yeah, you're rezoning to be conforming, but you've been here for, you know, a dozen years, and there may be variances that are appropriate.
That's what I was going to ask, if there was, what were we, grandfathering and coming out? Since this is 1864?
If you rezoned, you kind of lose any grandfathering rights. Right now, they don't have to comply with anything because they've been there so long and they predate everything. If you go to rezon, theoretically, you should bring in the compliance with what you're rezoning to, unless you get a variance.
I think there's buffer restrictions for anything that's commercial, that's up to residential too. I know that they're not as strict with some of them, but.
And if that's something we need to look at, appointing a vote to make sure it's all done at one time, we could. Because you'd hate to probably ask them to have to compile a variance application, but it could be done as part of this.
Now, my question, I don't know if it would, since it is an existing site, if it had to be brought up to standards, to.
Theoretically, yes.
That's what I thought.
Do we need to withdraw it and just make our horse show up to the city's hand?
No, I think you want to be compliant. I think you would probably want to give the council an opportunity to grant you a variance for any requirements of HI that a preexisting site doesn't meet because it is preexisting. So that may be something you want to look at. If you want to really get it all the way done, knowing nobody could complain in the future that, oh, where there was a big screening and where was all this other stuff? So you might want to do that. We could look at it.
Okay. I'll give you, I'll give you a phone line this way. Can you tell me what I need to remind?
Okay.
Anything else regarding to the rezoning for Blue Ridge Marble?
I don't understand why we can't go ahead and ground the bird and get rid of this thing completely.
Well, we just need to list what they're getting variance for.
Yeah. You just want to do it to where, you want to do it the right way. So if you do it the right way, the bird, when you, when you, when they zone their HI and you do it the right way, then you, it's done. Somebody else, another council coming in, can't come in and just make changes, then their grandfathered in, or they've been given a variance for things that's been here all along. So, and I think, I don't know if anybody on council that would not want to do that.
And I guess you could. I guess the question, would you want to give a variance for all requirements of HI that aren't met by the preexisting site? Do you know?
I don't know all the rest. I think buffers would have been one of the biggest things.
Yeah, some buffers, screening goes, I mean, I think your property goes way back around to there, and you back up to a lot of the subdivisions and stuff. In the HI, you'd be required a lot of fencing and screening and stuff just because you're against the property, where it doesn't exist now in the way you are, so you're trying to figure out the best way to make it all legal.
Well, I mean, what, if you were willing to grant a variance for all requirements of HI that would not be met by the existing site, you could probably go ahead and just say that and do it tonight.
No, we just cover everything.
Cover everything that doesn't comply.
Yeah, because there's not any changes being made. It's just, I, because I actually asked them to get taken care of because they wanted to get everything.
That's good, I mean, since we had the HI zone.
Yeah, we didn't know it before.
You guys were doing that?
So you could do that.
Yeah. The only adjustment I'd ask for is if he opened up a new section that hadn't been used before.
It would, and then you would have to comply with new, something that requires a permit or something like that.
Yeah. So how would that be worthy, Jeff?
That if you grant the rezoning request, you would also be granting a variance for any requirements of the HI zoning that are not met by the preexisting site.
So variance of HI zoning that are not?
For the requirements that are not met by the preexisting site.
Preexisting, so let me make sure I have this right. So grant a rezoning, rezoning to HI, and variance. And variances of HI zoning for any requirements that have not been met by?
The preexisting site.
Preexisting site. And we can do that tonight? Counsel, you want to do that tonight?
Common to hear a case and bill on the same night? I've never done a rezoning here. I've seen a reaction period, but it's no, no normal procedures. I don't think this is about my first one.
Yeah, but they, I guess, we have.
Yeah, I don't have anybody to, but we have the requirement to.
I know when they did it the first time, they tabled it and voted it, so that was 2006, 2007, so we never had a first hearing.
Yeah, look, see, I mean, you can vote twice if you need to. So if you voted tonight, you vote again if we determine that that needs ordinances required in general, but I don't know if somebody will. For a reason.
I was just asking.
Oh, yeah, yeah, your comment.
If so, we'll vote twice. If somebody voted this meeting and voted again at the next one. You will?
For it?
Yeah.
All right, can I get a motion to grant the rezoning for?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Are you voting before you listen to the rest of the input?
That was the input.
That was the input. You read through, the council spoke?
I raised my head, I'm on the club board, I have done a while to speak.
You read through your question, Lauren?
That was, had nothing to do with the discussion about the rezoning.
You may.
I just wanted to be clear that I have nothing against the marble company being a viable business, but I would like to clear up a few things I've heard that I don't feel correct. When the zoning came into effect in Nelson in 2002, this property was sold to apparently the current owners after that, like 2003, 2004. So.
So apparently, that's not correct. Apparently, that property has been in the Davis family from the beginning. They just weren't total owners until they bought all of the property out.
And the French companies were never in any form of ownership.
They own, if I'm not mistaken, did they not own shares?
Emmer's owned, Emmer's owned 73% of Georgia Marble Company, but all the holdings is divided by, it's very intricate, very complicated owner interest since 1884. 1887, they incorporated, and then 1917, Colonel Sam merged Blue Ridge Marble and all the holdings of Georgia Marble, but they, the properties around Nelson were still held by the Tate Estates, members of the Tate Estates, and then the company owned 50% of the one parts of the property, some properties they owned 65%, the Tate's own the rest, and then some the Tate's own 73%, the company owned, this is very complicated, this is very complicated, but they had an interest in it from the beginning.
They had an, they had an interest, but did they have an interest that was on a property deed is the question. I don't want to beat a dead horse over this because my point is, we're dealing with an entity here that is not the original Georgia Marble Company. They sold off parts of this, in fact, the city bought the, one of the old marble buildings. It's still at an auction, I forget exactly how that worked, but the marble company sold off parts of this that the city bought. So.
So what was the point here?
The point, the point here is that zoning came in in 2002. And approximately, I don't remember the exact date, but it was brought to the attention of the council that the business that was being carried on in the marble company building was in compliance with the zoning, which had been set up initially as neighborhood commercial.
Who would set it up as neighborhood commercial with a train track running right through it?
Let me finish that for you. The, the reason for that was, no one knew at that time where the marble company would continue as a marble company or what it was going to be. So the council that was preparing the zoning ordinance had assigned a zoning district to that, and consensus at that time was that if we were ever going to have a downtown for Nelson, it would need to be in this area if it ever became available. So it was assigned this neighborhood commercial. Then the current marble company came in and started doing work that was not within neighborhood commercial. So the city started the process to change the zoning to something that would be more in compliance. And the process went from one end to the other. The planning commission had public hearings, did the whole sphere, presented to the council, and the council found out that the owners of the marble company had not requested that, in fact, never even participated in the zoning hearing when it was made into light industrial, and parts of it left as neighborhood commercial. So why the marble company didn't notice what was going on, I have no idea. But fast forward to today, all we need to do is determine what kind of business is going to be run there and see if it is going to be in compliance.
He just told us that he's doing the same business he's always done there, which is marble.
And if you took the time to look at the letter I presented tonight.
I saw that.
Your items that are allowable in heavy industrial are so out of bounds, it's to be.
And that's something that the council will need to address, as far as what's there. We will, we know that we have a lot of things that we need to go back, we need to look at our financial policy. Again, we haven't done that two years. There's a lot of things that we need to look at. We're looking at triorons, and we'll take it one by one.
So I just wanted to clear up those items. If you, if you grant the heavy industrial as that ordinance now stands, you have opened the door for those 297-plus items, which includes cattle feed yard and so forth. It's invalid. So what I'm suggesting, that you table this until you get your ordinance correct, and then recall the people who want to file for an ordinance change. But it's so out of bounds right now, I can't actually have it looked at for the council.
Because he's doing the same thing he's done there since 1864.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You can understand, I mean, I got one there.
Yes.
And the reason HI has so many uses, that there are a lot of uses that you have to allow somewhere, or it's illegal to not allow them, and they get stuck in HI. It's unusual to have HI. If you want to condition your protocol on the existing use, that would probably be appropriate. Because you probably do not have to be on a side of a power plant or the other things that are allowed in HI. And that means that in the future, even a future HI business that's not this use would have to come ask for permission. So you probably want to add that.
I guess what brought this up is when they come up in 2003, somebody on the county council got the wise idea for the city to buy that building and put little stores in. And I thought that was dumb, I would say. And they come back and said it wasn't.
So you want to put a condition on that?
Business.
Council. Yes. All right, with the condition. I'll just put that it's marble or stone or something, just that they. Existing use.
You didn't say existing use, so that's probably. Rather than.
Because he does call it.
Rather than being a man.
Yeah. All right, can I get a motion to grant the rezoning to HI for the Georgia Marble, Blue Ridge Marble, heavy industrial zoning?
I might move it.
With a variance. With the variances for any HI zoning that any requirements are not met by the preexisting site with the condition for the existing use.
I might move it.
Nathan and James Second, Paul and David. You have it, thank you. Okay. All right, the next up is going to be rezoning from LI to HI for Jeremy Denton's property. For the, if you want to show these, you can, I'm sure people would like to see them, but this is for the property that he's bringing the concrete, what is it called? Precast concrete or?
Yeah, a separate file variance application, so we'll just do those separately.
Yeah, okay. Do you want some?
You're going to pass around or?
Obviously. If you want, Chelsea and I can hold it right here. And you can talk to them.
So nothing's really changed other than we got our light industrial. We still have a heavy industrial zoning in the city then, so still same thing, we're going to do a precast concrete, manufacturing plant right there, make concrete structures for storm drain and sewer drain. So we'll buy your own concrete on site, and we'll have two manufacturing facilities. We left a buffer all the way around, I don't remember if that was a 50, or I know it's a 50. Yeah, so a 50-foot buffer all the way around the property. That's about it.
Is there anybody else that wants to speak in favor of the zoning?
Anybody in favor of the rezoning?
Anybody that wants to speak in opposition?
Well, he had a letter from, I think it was Tony, he was just wanting to address that if it's approved, and his letter is inherent, it's right behind section five, that there was just conditions put on that they couldn't turn into a corporation, that they couldn't mine their property back.
We don't put on a property to mine.
But I think it's, there was just.
Yeah.
Something that was all out.
Yeah.
That's not the case. So do we hear from?
Anybody else want to speak on this one?
Can that just be used for this precast? I mean, sort of like this time back to going to Marvel, it could be used for anything down the road, but right now, it's just going to be used for that precast.
And again, that's if you put that condition.
And if I wanted to do something else with another portion of that property, we just come here and do this again, and it either gets approved or not approved.
If they did that condition, yes.
Yeah.
Do you have any plans to do anything else with it?
I don't know, but I mean, that could change.
The only contact I've had about it is literally just the concern that the quarry would at some point purchase it and start mining because this person had had some, I think some damage to a current property from blasting.
That would be one of my concerns right there.
He told me straight up, he has no issues with what Jeremy's doing up on the plant, it was just the concern that the quarry could potentially.
And we have no plans to blast mine anymore that way.
Yes, ma'am.
So if someone was still often blasted, that would be someone purchasing it from Jeremy and then come back to the council?
With that condition, yes.
And my only other question is, the entrance is going to be on Jordan Road or on Old Nelson?
On Nelson. There is an entrance right now on Jordan, right there, it's a little temporary entrance. I was going to build a little building around there, it's like a barn or something, but just to store stuff.
And Cherokee County has to permit the driveway.
And we do have a driveway permitted out of the dress right there.
Yeah.
Nine twelve, Jordan Avenue.
Yeah, that's for the current one, the other one.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But the trucks and everything go in and out of Nelson, on Old Nelson.
Nelson, that's right.
And I know, like, Tony, they're our cousin, because we, all of us live on that route.
Yeah.
And I know they mentioned about like dust and everything, but I think that's more if it's a quarry that there would be dust. I don't know if there's an issue with that, wouldn't you have seen that?
Well, I mean, it'll be a gravel lot, so there can be an issue with dust. Part of that's the buffer that we leave, and then we also use dust control during the storm, which is a liquid, almost like molasses that we put down on the ground twice a day, to keep the dust.
And is there any lot of dust studies or air quality studies or anything like that?
It's the same stuff they're using at the quarry, so.
Any other questions?
I wanted to clarify too, the reason that this is being done now, because I was asked this this week too, is because we did not have an HI zoning district when he annexed into the city. The highest zoning area was the LI.
But he annexed in with the council knowing that he was going to be doing prepacking.
And HI also actually lists precast concrete structures in the zoning classification. There's copies of the zoning things.
Do we have time to read?
Okay. You want to?
Counsel, you guys, go ahead and start with, we'll start with William, go around the table, William, if you have anything with regards to the rezoning.
For the applicant, kind of the same thing as with the first case. You're aware that there are different requirements for the HI that you may have to alter your plan to meet?
If y'all have, do y'all have copies of what that might be?
I have copies of what that might be.
You're like, there's a lot of buffering and stuff, building barns and fences and.
We'll fence the whole facility and whatever, anyway, so.
That's just a question for you. It's about how you're changing zoning, but I don't know how set your plan.
And as far as all of our storm drain. And as far as all of our storm drain and water runoff, I mean, that's going to all be controlled by the APD.
Oh, yeah, there's a question about that.
Yeah.
James, you have anything? John, you there? You're good. Who's in here? Okay, can I get a motion to grant the zoning from Illinois to HI for the Denton property? Can we do that in the other area of the phone here?
Uh, nine twelve, Jordan Road is the address that we have right now. That won't be the final address though. That won't be the final address.
But that won't be the final.
You can use the architect's number.
It's 04.
Or board number eighty-seven.
All right, 04 N 03 27. Can I get a motion to approve?
We want additions.
Which conditions?
That it be used.
That it be used for precast concrete manufacturing.
Yeah, I might come up.
John? William Taylor, Paul in favor? Unanimous.
Want a copy of the.
Can we go ahead and bring him a bury?
That's, that's up next, is the variants for the tree organs. And I think we discussed that, we discussed this mostly in our, in our meeting, our work session. Is there anything else that you need to go over with this one here, just the variants for the tree organs?
What were we burying? Come up, what did the application ask?
I think you just put it as logging, just because they need to clear prior to selling. I think was it Arver she talked to, it was like thirteen fifty thousand to, it'd be just to come in and check it.
Is it this one?
Yes, my answer just says for logging.
Just for, it's for development, for clearing the area to put his plant. It's what it's for. The tree, a tree variants for the development of the cell, itself. He's leaving a 50-foot buffer, he's clearing out the middle to be able to install.
And there will be land staking.
It's my understanding that there's already been logging going on with that.
Is the logging going on there?
Wouldn't we pass this variance before that started?
Technically, technically, we would need to do that, yeah. So the variant, for the.
So the variant application is to allow logging if it was otherwise protected. That appears to be the variant's application.
I know he's cleared his driveway over there, by not necessarily.
That was like thirty county.
Yeah, we know that.
And it's for his roads, I think it's thirty foot, so far back in there. This will be to clear out the center of that property.
Are there any public comments or any comment? Yeah, it's a hearing.
Take it here.
So, did you want to say anything else about the variants application? Anybody want to speak in favor of the variants application? Does anybody want to speak in opposition to the variants application?
I got, I got a question. What kind of hours do you want to have?
You want to start?
Our current. Six o'clock in the morning, go to midnight?
No, no, no. Our location right now runs about five thirty in the morning to four thirty in the morning.
I know down where the saw is, that, that motor on top of that plane starts about six o'clock in the morning and runs to about eleven, twelve at night. You can hear it pretty good at my house.
I bet. Council?
Discuss.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, you talked about this earlier, I was in favor of granting it. But my motion, if I get to make a motion, will be to deny it.
Okay.
Since it was done before.
Okay. James?
I'm for it.
Nancy? Tracy? Nathan?
Deny it.
Do we go and get to the vote now? Okay. Can I get a vote to approve the variants for Jeremy Denton for 04 N 03 027? Tree organs for the tree organ variants for the development of the center of his property? Get a motion?
Okay, motion.
Jenny, you have a second? Chelsea, Paul in favor? Are all, all in favor of this three opposed to? Next up is public comment. Anybody have anything with regards to, to the department or to the unfinished business or the new business on the agenda for this evening? We'll move on, and we'll pass on, ask for approval of the minutes for the council meeting, February the 12th, 2024.
We've got a motion to approve the minutes from February 12th.
William, you have a second?
I'm today good.
James, Paul in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the work session minutes for February the 22nd, 2024?
I can motion for those minutes also.
Oh, William Taylor, can I get a second? John Oliver? And it's all in favor. Unanimous. Police reports, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yeah, we just had a felony warrant service over here in Brent Drive, Alford Road. A person went to jail. And then obviously, just last week, Cherokee County was, was kind of torn between the trooper funeral and Ms. Lincoln Riley, so, so we had a very busy week. We had a pectally wreck over in Ballarat at the same time. So just keep those families in your burners and all, so that's it.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, appreciate you. And, see, the next step is going to be a major report. Our Easter event is coming along, we decided on a date for March the 23rd at 1:00 P.M., that's Saturday, with a rainout date of Sunday, March the 24th at 2:00 P.M. Okay, so mark that on your calendar. And give her a birthday time to go to church and pray for November.
Of course, no.
All right. Next up, under unfinished, under unfinished business, I have a tree wellness revision. Do you guys want to just, you want to, does anybody have anything on that tonight, or we want to wait until our next work session to, to finish finalizing those things?
Is it what I'm looking for?
Oh, fine, I love you on that.
This means we're in the year.
That's fine, it's fine.
Go ahead, Miranda.
All right, there.
I'm still not.
First off, bank balances, general fund. We're at, this is as of today, one million, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars. Past reserve, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and three. Cares grant, a hundred and nine seven thousand and three dollars. Squash two is over, closed. Squash four, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, fourteen dollars. Squash five, nine hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-one. Squash twenty twenty, one million, thirty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars. We are currently here today, annual budget of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and eight. Year to date, we are at three hundred and nineteen dollars, three hundred thousand and nineteen dollars. That is fifty-four percent, fifty-four point three seven percent, should be sixty-six point six or less. That's for overall expenditures. Revenue yields, annual budget, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and eight. Year to date, five hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six. That's ninety point two percent, and we are going into our ninth month. So that should be sixty-six point seven percent or more. So overall, we're looking at a couple of things. We've got the budget coming up. I'd like to go ahead and kind of get a start on that. I know we have the work session, but next month, I will have you a budget calendar for us to review, but we're probably going to have a work session to talk about all things next year. And we want to plan for that.
Okay, so I know that Michael Kidd is coming Wednesday, the 10th, or at 10:00. So let's, let's shoot for a work session in April.
Yeah, I say, yeah.
That'll give him time as well. So I know that we've got spring break in there. Do you know what day is spring break?
Especially this first week of April.
First week of April. So we don't want that, and we don't have the Easter to get to the end.
I would stay around.
The third?
The third or the 20th.
So either April, Tuesday the 23rd, or Thursday the 25th. What works best for you guys? You have enough time? Come up. So let's say the 23rd? Okay. Tuesday, the 23rd. That'll be for the budget and also for the information Michael Kidd brings out.
I'd like to go ahead and raise them there. To adopt the budget, the person we.
Okay. Gotcha. We should have followed that.
No, but I should.
Start with the next one?
Yeah.
Thank you, Miranda.
Thank you.
Tree ordinance revisions, do we want to table that one tonight? Or does anybody have anything more than what we have when we have the? I know you have the order, I know you've done it myself.
No, well, well, probably maybe a couple of times. And then, I mean, for then, and then come back with some stuff, and then we can all work on.
Yeah. Or March, maybe April, have something to go over.
Yeah.
Everybody good with that? Okay. Put it back on April, please. All right, next step is on new business, all equipment.
Speaker H actually wanted to talk.
So, do you want to give the council just a brief how our policies that we'll review?
Many three five years are supposed to issue a request for proposal, choose an audit firm, carry a four-year for two hundred options. We have two proposals in here and Tasty Semi Pricing, we're on the campus in here as well. So it's, we're supposed to be doing this frequently, doesn't it?
So Speaker H come out and met with us, or met with me previously about a month ago, and I told him that since we've been reviewing together, we would have him come out and, and speak to the council. So if you guys want to come up, this is Roger.
And Brian. And Brian.
Standing here.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. First and foremost, Madam Mayor and the council, thank you for giving us the opportunity to come over with you guys. Those have been here in the city of Nelson. Brian's dad's actually from here, so we kind of toured around earlier. Beautiful city, great citizens. So while we're here, one, we'd like to have the opportunity to work with the city of Nelson to do your audit over the course of the next five years. We're, we're the type of firm that's, we're partners. We're not looking for a transaction. As I have briefed, Ms. Green, we're an accounting firm where if you've got a question at 10:00 o'clock at night, we want you to be able to take the phone up to call us. We believe that bad news doesn't get better with time. Brian and I both served a number of years in the Army. We like to, we bring that same type of mentality to work that we do. It's all about planning, briefing what we're going to do, executing the plan, and then coming back in and figuring out what we didn't do right, fix it, move forward, and don't make the same mistake twice. Our team, a lot of people don't know this, but they're trained, we spend about 10 hours a year training them in leadership, organization, communication knowledge. And ultimately, what that does is, from a training perspective of about 200 employees, it enables us to be able to get the whole team going in the right direction, talking the same music, if you will, so that when we come and do different audits, which we've done several different audits with cities the size of Nelson to larger ones, one of the things I'm probably most proud of is Mr. Cable here, retired Army infantry guy, OEF, OIF veteran, has been to every single city in the state of Georgia minus eight, driven to every single one and every county. And I'm pretty proud of that because that shows our commitment to the state. The thing I like to tell everybody at the end of the day, we care. We care about the small communities. I live in a small community. Brian lives in a small community. A lot of times, what we found in our travels, sometimes these small communities get overlooked, and they don't become a priority because there's bigger firms out there that maybe want to make more money, okay? For us, we want to earn your trust, we want to earn your business, and we're going to do the right thing. I would be remiss if I didn't tell you we're about 30 minutes away. So it's not like we're, you know, 400 miles away from where we're at. I think one of the things that differentiates our firm is that we do have the same consistent team that will come on site. We've done small cities like the city of Tiggle. We've actually pulled some cities that are five years delinquent out of the mess, if you will, that were out of compliance and got them back in compliance and did it within six months. Five years delinquent. And that takes round-the-clock work. So what helps us is we're able to work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, because we do have overseas offices. In fact, we have one office in Kiev, Ukraine, which has been one torn. And a credit to our chairman of war, Mr. Harry Caprissi. He has personally picked a lot of our employees up and moved them into neighboring countries to where their families are safe. And I'm very big on, on service, okay? Otherwise, I wouldn't be here. I believe in serving people. I believe in doing the right thing, and I hope we have an opportunity to actually service you guys. And I would like to thank you for able to save your $28,000 over five years. That might be pretty good cost savings. Any questions for me, from the council? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Take a look at that there. We've got both, we've got two in here. We just posted it. And then we've got, do we have Tasty's?
Yeah, it's just an email.
Okay.
The first page part.
This is not a, it says, you guys, if you don't mind, take, take these three things home. Let's go over any questions you have in our next work session before we make any decisions. And then any questions, if you think of any questions as you're reviewing these and you want me to get answers to them, let me know. And I'll be happy to. Stuff you guys would just review, there's a lot of books, we'll, we'll add this back to our work session. Let me know if there are any questions. Next up is going to be our financial policy revisions. Dollar melts required, per sealer bids, dollar melt for purchases exceeding the spending limits. So right now, we're at a thousand dollars for the city administrator clerk to spend. That, I want to see that raised to 3,000. The reason being is, is anytime that we have training that we're signing everybody up for, we go open on that, so.
It's also the purchase of, one tire, or 700 bucks a piece.
So tires for one of our box packs is 700 bucks.
One tire?
Yeah, one tire, so we can either order a set of tires. The other thing that I want to look at also is the purchases exceeding $10,000 with a sealed bid. I'd like to see that raised, I know for the state they've gone from 100K to 250K now. I'd like to see the cities raised, and I'd like for your input on what you think that should be. This would take care of stuff like emergencies and things like that. I'd also like to see a list of contractors that we have a, an agreement with that we could call 24/7 and get them out here. Like when we have a hole in the road or we have something major happen, we have an emergency. Right now I would have to call the council, we would have to have a special meeting just to do business for the city.
And what happens if that happens?
So. I know, John, you brought this up, what's your thoughts on that?
I like that you're having a list of contractors. We know, but my, my take is probably 20,000 dollars. I realize that 100,000 for the state that hurts me.
That's Mr. Ryan Mount, give us a story. Come to do that.
Okay. That list of contractors, I'd like to take a look at the people that we've used in the past and maybe look at that in our work session and come up with that list of contractors. I'll get put from everybody on that. I think our last project that was emergency, this one in here was just under 15,000. So, and then our, our issue with our, the hole that opened up, do you know which that was? Did it come up that way?
Too much hole?
The hole that opened up over here.
What, middle of the road?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's nothing up with the sun, but I think we had a couple of sunburns, I think it was a hole, like, I don't know.
It's loyal.
So then, this is just to, to talk about, I know that we've had increases. We're not going to vote tonight on this unless you guys just feel the need to. But I'd like for you to think about it, come back with your suggestions in April at our next meeting.
Sure, I would consider doing away with the sealed bid part of that. And I don't know if we've really been doing that, but that's hard to do. I think instead, traditionally we just obtain, obtain three bids.
Obtain three bids.
Sealed bid process, a little excessive or 10,000.
And you'd have to do it in both papers, have to run the papers, I think for two years.
I would limit that probably to the state amount.
So just do three bids per the state amount, just three bids, it don't have to be sealed?
Probably up to the state amount.
Okay, to the state amount.
There's just a lot to, there'd be a lot of procedure to follow, just for these kinds of projects. I don't think they're following it because it'd be too hard.
Well, half the time when we have an emergency, we can't follow it. And the people that are bidding on this are bidding.
You know, having to see the kit for quotes, get three bids to do the competitive sealed bid process. Yeah, have them make a little excessive on it.
Yeah. That's a good, I'll, I'll make a note of that, that's a good one, so, just do bids, do away with sealed bid. Bring anything over to 250, which is the best.
That's a good one to do.
I don't know if you've been voting on it, it's going to the house, I think, and it's processing. And that's what your...
But whatever, state.
Just put state, just put the state limit then, okay.
Yeah, that's the easiest, just stick.
Okay.
Yeah, and then if you're just...
So if you would, be thinking about that number, if anybody else have anything, who's the 20,000, be thinking if that's a good number for us. And then, and then the bids, we can do three bids without, without having to seal bids up to the state limit and then be looking at a list of contractors. I like to use local people, so. Anytime that we venture outside and we get people in from area, it's always like three and four times the amount. So we'll put that one back on for April if you don't mind. Get input from everybody on the list of contractors. Dollar amount and change from sealed bids to state. Any questions on that? And then also the, your, yours for, for daily, for the daily, so. So everything is going up, so we need to clerk daily so she can order tires and things like that.
And still stuff is working within the budget?
It is, it's still working within the budget, so it's not like we're changing budget or anything like that. We're not exceeding what's in our budget, we're just making it to where she don't have to order one tire one day and one tire next. And that's really the main thing, that and when she does, cool for everybody because it's, you know, our classes cost. You know, by the time she does three or four people's classes, it's on her pay. Next thing is property purchase.
Did you get signed up?
You got the contract signed?
He'll see.
Oh, you have the...
And now we can sign it and we can go through.
Do I include the amount plus closing cost? Is that why I'm going to, just want to make sure.
You just approved the contract.
Okay, just approved, do I approve the amount in the contract or just approve the contract?
Which includes the amount. You're approving all of that.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the property purchase? 74 Spring Street. Property purchase plus closing cost.
You're, you're approving the purchase and sale agreement.
Yes.
Has been signed by the seller.
Yes, purchase and sale agreement has been approved by the, by the seller. Can I get a motion to approve?
No, I have no motion.
James? John, all in favor? All right, so we need to sign that, and now, Nathan, you're not, can I get a motion to go? John, all in favor? Unanimous.